This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful that you've allowed us to see another day. We are thankful that you have allowed us to gather together as we take interest in the matters concerning our local government. We ask that you can be involved in decisions that are pleasing in your sight, that we may benefit the community, that we may have our hearts and our minds open to the needs of those at this particular hour as we face yet another holiday season, and we ask for a charitable spirit, and that all things that we do in both our public, private, and our government lives will be in such a way that is pleasing to kingdom upbuilding here on this earth. We will be ever thankful, grateful, and happy to give you all the praise, the glory, and the honor in your son's name. It's these things we ask. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In light of Friday's incident in France and in recognition of those lives that were lost, I'd like for us to observe, please, a moment of silence. If you may. Thank you. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work sessions and city council meeting held on November 10.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of November 6 through the 12.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, ma'am. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1427 East Broad Street in District 1, Diane Johnson being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come on up. Ms. Johnson, if you would, come to the microphone there and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Diane Johnson. I stay at 710 Radis Street. I am the only sibling left in my family, and I have been doing work on the house. I had rented out some of his senior time, but he didn't say exactly how long. But inside, I have put close to $3,000. I had the ceiling redone. I had floors put down in the kitchen. And I had the cars removed. And I keep the yard up. I cut down the bushes and everything. But only time I have some little extra money, like income tax, and I've been using money on my vacation checks and doing the work on the house. So I feel like, you know, to tear it down, I wish y'all would just let me try to continue to do the little work that I, you know, am doing on. I want to finish the house because I want to keep the house because it's my parents' house.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison. We started this case in August of 2012. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. We're certainly not opposed to the owner having the opportunity to make the needed repairs. Like I said, we've been working the case over three years now. We've had no contact from anyone. There are no permits that have been applied for or issued, and we're just asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Is this a house that's possible, can be, I know it can be rehabbed? Ms. Johnson, do you know how, I know you're working-
I have a pretty old house because I could get some time, you know. And inside the house, I mean, when I came home, the house, they used to go see friends. My son was playing TV. But when the house, I got power, but seeing my house, you know, but my son was not in the house, nor did they think, in the house, they keep down the door. That was one of the problems I had to make, I think, keep down the door. I always said, keep, they keep it down the door. And I came up in the car, and they told me stay in the car. I said, don't shoot my son. He said, man, we don't know anything. I said, don't shoot, you believe him? And somebody, two minutes came up, and I went to the police office, okay, said to the other police officer, he said, what do we do, we don't keep down the door? He said, put a, come, they don't say money, cause the cars, they grab, they cut. But I had power on, I had one door, and my son knew that video. So that's because they, they didn't have any door, anybody knew, and I could keep down the door. They wrapped it, I had a fireplace, they moved bricks, and then they asked me, they said, why don't you, I said, you see a fireplace, and they said, how do you get up there? I said, I don't know, my parents, they just, they didn't know, they didn't get that big hole in the ceiling, trying to see what's in the attic, or something.
Well, not to cut you off, but basically, what I'm trying to find out is that, I know Mr. Harbison said that they've been working on this since 2012. That's about three years. Can you, can you give us, can you give us a time? Say, if you had 30 days, could you bring it up to standards? I mean, it doesn't look like a bad house, but-
It's not. Like I said, I-
Ms. Johnson, how much time do you need? That's what she needs?
Well, I try my best.
If I gave you 30 days and then you came, and there has to be some type of improvement within 30 days.
Yeah.
30 days from today.
I'm talking about improvement, like, I know I got to ask money, but I got my answer.
Why don't you get with, why don't you get with Mr. Harbison as far as bringing it up to standard?
Mr. General, right here.
After, after the, after the meeting. But what I'll do is I'll recommend to the council that we, that we give you 30 days. But there has to be some type of improvement. If not, then we'll abate it. So I move to give her 30 days.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 707 Clare Street in District 2, State of Alabama, and Thomas Dwayne Garmon being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of 2011. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 104 Elmwood Avenue in District 2, ADS LLC being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, give us your name and address.
My name is Harvey Goings, 301 Casey Drive. The property there, I have the grass cut every two weeks and half of the last several years as long as I've owned it. There was a small fire in there and had electrician to check it, but then it was required to rewire the entire house, and I did. I don't know what I need to do to bring it up to code, but I've had no one in the house for the last several years. But, you know, I try to keep it up, so just tell me what I need to do to get it off of the list.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of 2014. There have been no improvements. There are no permits on file. We've had no contact from anyone concerning this. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Again, I think as, as is always the case, you know, you have to consider, you know, what, what was said by the building department. There's been no permits, no activity. So if there are plans to bring this house to code, I think it's important that you reach out to the building department just to make sure they understand what your plans are, and there may be some, some level of opportunity. But, but if we abate it, he won't even get a license or permit to do anything. Yeah. That's, that's correct.
I was wondering if Brian could get with him and tell him what he needs to do and see if he's, sounds like he said he would.
The same, the same question that we posed to the young lady, but to Mrs. Johnson. How much time do you need? Okay. What, what we'll do is we'll, we'll make a motion that, that you, that we defer this for 30 days. And then at that point, that'll buy you time to speak with the building department, and you'll get a better understanding of what it means to bring it up, what's needed to bring it up to code. And at that point, to the point that was made earlier, if we revisited it in 30 days and those improvements haven't been made, then we'll have to consider abating the nuisance again. Okay?
We, we had a motion in second for adoption. So are we changing the motion, or should we vote on that one first and then consider the table?
I move that we rescind the motion.
Right.
Okay. So do we have a motion to table now?
Make a motion to table.
For 30 days.
For 30 days.
So we have a 30-day table and a second motion. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
And I hope, I hope at some level this demonstrates that, again, this council, we're not interested really in tearing down homes, but we, we have to abate nuisances. I mean, that, that's, that's important. That's a part of what, what the building department has to do and what the city has to do in order to, to keep the city presentable, so. Our next, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 506 Polk Street in District 2, Tuscaloosa LLC and Mutual Savings Credit Union being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in March of 2011. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1112 Forest Avenue in District 5, Ralph Willis and Linda Willis Frontier Financial, Delta Discount Corporation, First Family Financial, and Great Eastern Financial Services assigned to Green Tree Financial being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in June of 2011. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Brian, this is a house I was talking to you about upstairs. It's, that's, that's across the street from me, so I know that's a pretty sound house. I need, we need to see what we can do to save that.
Inside, fairly demolished.
Cause there's no windows in it, cause people have stole the windows. Yeah. Okay.
Can I just ask a question? On Brian, there are five things listed here. Do they all have a mortgage interest in this property? There are five financial organizations listed. Not looking at the title opinion, I don't know if these mortgages have, have been satisfied, but just may not have been recorded as been satisfied. And as long as they're still shown as open, then we have to notify, so.
This house I know has a mortgage on it, cause I know the lady that's, that left it.
This guy files.
I know one, but I don't know about how many others.
I just wondered how you could do that.
Brian, on these, like, when you get to this point, have you already done the title thing on them?
Yeah.
You know, a few years ago, we started rehabbing some of them, and like, if we spent $5,000 and we could give title, we would turn around and people would be giving us $5,000, take the house, and finish up the inside, rent it out, or whatever. We, we need to start, cause we did about 15 or 20 of those there for a while, I think. You remember what I'm talking about?
We, yeah, we actually did 38 rehabs. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll look at each case. Once a resolution's been passed, we have a number, and it's, it's 20% of the last appraised value.
Right.
It's usually based on the tax assessor's office. But if we can do the rehab, if the inside's not too far gone, if it doesn't need a roof system, then we'll, we'll try to plug it into a rehab.
We might want to, cause, actually, we could put them on 99. You know, we had our signs for the city number, and a lot of people were buying them there for a while. Cause I cut the grass at this place, so I, every two weeks- You got sweat equity in you, man. No, I don't know anything. I, I just cut it to make my, my property look better, so. But, you know, it's, it's sort of against my nature to turn it, but, but a lot of them, like, a couple of these we've had today, could look to me like, it's pretty good on the outside. You know, you can go in sheet rock and do a little paint and all that, not too, too much money. We might let somebody give us some money and take it over. Okay?
Does anyone else wish to speak in favor? What is the pleasure of the council?
We have a motion in second for adoption. We were just discussing-
Okay. All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1304 Main Street in District 5, Larry Perkins and Estate and heirs of Jonas Simmer being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April 2012. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in April 2012. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 418 Miller Street in District 6, Joe Simmington being the last known owner, Simmington being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Sir, if you would, just give us your name and address, please.
Joe Simmington, 595 Marina Parkway.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. I got the house, and I've been tearing out the insides of it, and I hadn't started tearing down the outside. I'm tearing the house down completely and rebuilding. I just need a little more time.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of 2013. There have been no improvements. There was a demolition permit taken out by the homeowner in July of 2014. Been no work carried out on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Before I make my recommendation, Mr. Simmington, it appears that you live in Pickensville, Alabama, is that correct? And it appears to me that you're probably a really busy man, and I'm gonna go ahead and help you out instead of you having to tear it down. We'll tear it down, you can just pay us, make monthly payments. How about that? You have to talk with the building inspector about that. I'm making a motion to abate the nuisance, please. He can see you after the hearing.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 3704 Trenton Street in District 7, Johnny Lorian Moon, Jarvis Cow Moon, and Grant Moon being the last known owners. Is there any, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves an abandoned mobile home. We started our process in October of 2013. There have been no improvements to the property. There was a building permit taken out in November of 2013 with no action taking on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items number 17 through 20 are resolutions accepting conveyance of property. The owners have requested the city accept conveyance of the property in lieu of nuisance abatement proceedings, and we have four locations. There are 102 10th Street North in East Gadsden, 619 Newton Street, 1213 Alabama Avenue, and 1404 Hill Avenue. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all four resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
New business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. Requested by EMA a resolution approving the 2015 through 2020 Etowah County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazardous Mitigation Plan. That's for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would like to ask the EMA representative to come in and explain a little bit. You would?
Thank you. I'm Michael Amberson with the Etowah County Emergency Management Agency. This plan is a plan that's required by FEMA to be updated every five years. It essentially explains how we as a community seek to lessen the impact of emergencies and disasters. For instance, tornadoes, we would look for purchasing weather radios or doing tornado safe rooms or- or flood hazard mitigation, things of that nature. We are asking every jurisdiction in Etowah County, in addition to the City of Gadsden, to adopt this as our hazard mitigation plan.
Thank you.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have Resolution 564, it's for removing the moratorium on cell tower application. That's for unanimous consent, consent.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
As only this is to drop the moratorium so we can accept additional applications.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
I have one more, it's Resolution 554, authorizing change order number one with J&amp;D Enterprises on bid number 3297, the Naklula Falls Park Walking Path Paving Project. That's unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business? Department reports committees. Hold up, Howell.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm Howell Matthews, Environmental Services Superintendent for the City of Gadsden. I'd like to take a moment to brief you and the council on an award the City of Gadsden received at a recent SWANA conference in Gunnersville. SWANA is an acronym for Solid Waste Association of North America. It's a leading professional association, has been the leading association for probably 50 years. The Alabama Department of Environmental Management sanctions and utilizes SWANA for their training and continued education requirements. Generally, we are required to attend two conferences and training sessions per year in order to obtain our continuing education hours and contact hours. As some may not be fully aware, landfilling is no longer the low-tech act of covering some undesirable rubbish with some dirt and a dozer to alleviate the stink. It's approximately 25 years ago, the federal government enacted what is referred to as Sub-Title D regulations that define and govern the processing of solid waste. Among this legislation are requirements that have exacting standards and record-keeping safeguards designed to ensure that solid waste is properly defined, accounted for, and processed. With the recent dollar-per-ton tax that was levied on solid waste landfills in the state of Alabama, ADM has had the ability to reinforce, to bolster their staff, more or less, their activities, whereas we might, in the past, have had a couple of inspections a year. Now it's at least four inspections a year, and these are all random and unannounced inspections that a field agent goes out and checks to see if we're doing the job properly. Our landfill crew works very hard, whether they're battling 95-degree heat in August, or maybe 32-degree weather, rainy weather in February, but they get the job done, and they ensure that we stay in compliance with the guidelines set forth in our permit. These folks are, who deserve all of our praise and accolades, because they're the ones, as I said, that get the job done. They're each highly skilled operators that the City of Gadsden employs. We're very proud of, management's very proud of them. There's well over 100 landfills of varying types operating in the state of Alabama. Among these, 88 of them are the type of landfill that we operate, so C&amp;D, which is a construction and demolition landfill, and similar to the one we operate. This year, at SWANA's Fall Conference that was held first of November, November the 4th through the 6th in Gunnersville at State Park, ADM, Alabama Department of Environmental Management, they awarded the City of Gadsden the C&amp;D Landfill of the Year. Council, take a look at that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Howell, thank you. It's very good news, sure. And it's a tribute to the hard work, as Howell mentioned, it's a tribute to the hard work that our city employees do.
Yeah, if you think that ain't a big deal to keep a landfill in compliance, you need to go out there someday and check it out for a little bit. That's a good job.
I'm Mike Hilton, I'm with the Public Works Department, City of Gadsden. I just want to talk to you a little bit, too, before I get into leaf season, if I can, Howell is real bad about not giving himself credit where credit is due. Howell is our Environmental Services Superintendent, and the landfill, it really is, it's his baby. I mean, if you have any questions about anything, any regulations with ADM or anything like that, he's the guy that you want to go to. And that award is because of Howell. Now, he recognized the guys and girls that are out there running the machines and doing the work, but without his leadership, that doesn't happen, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows where that came from. So, with that being said, let's talk about leaves for just a minute. It is that time of year, leaves are falling. We currently. Yes, sir. We're still cutting grass, this is middle of November. I've got grass crews that are still out cutting grass with large machines and small machines. But in addition to that, we have, I think we're running six leaf machines now, pull behind leaf machines, vacuum machines, and also either eight or nine, depending what we have broken in a day, loader trucks that are picking up debris and leaves, too. There are a lot of leaves on the ground. I've been through every district in the last couple of weeks, for sure. There are a lot of leaves out there, we promised to have those up by this time next year, so if you'll just bear with us. I will say right up front, they won't be up before Thanksgiving, but the majority of those will be up. They're falling, the rain's coming in tomorrow, we've got some bad weather coming in, so what leaves are still on the trees will probably be down this weekend. These guys are working, they are working, guys and girls are working overtime. We have some work coming this weekend, going to work all day Saturday. Hopefully, again, the following Saturdays, we can get this stuff in, weather permitting. Just want you to bear with us, we do ask the citizens, if they put the leaves out on the street, please do not block the gutters, don't block the drainways, don't put the leaves on the inlet. If you're putting the leaves in the ditch, we would recommend that you don't, please don't block your driveway, because we'll get that call the next day that says, hey, my yard's flooded, and I don't know why, and then we'll get out there in this monster pile of leaves right on top of an inlet. So help us with that if you can. As always, you can call the Public Works Office and let us know that leaves are out there. Probably not going to get there faster, but we don't want you to not call and let us know that they're, we work on a route system. Currently, today, we started, we just finished up in North Gadsden, we started in East Gadsden. Let me tell you how the route runs, starting in East Gadsden today, we'll finish East Gadsden, go to the Country Club, Clubview area, to downtown, South Gadsden, Walnut Park area, Oak Park, jump over to the Mill Village, come back up through the mountain, down through Tuscaloosa Avenue, and then out to North Gadsden, then start over again. So depending on where we're at, week by week, it depends on where we're at, but we're moving in that circle all the time. Currently, today, it's taken us about three days to get one area, and that's determined by the volume of leaves. Now, the loader trucks are in your districts every day, Monday through Friday, there's a loader truck there picking up debris, and we've talked with those guys about not passing a leaf pile. Now you can imagine, if there's 50 piles of leaves and one pile of debris, it's going to slow them down a little bit. We're getting with both. We've had calls that said, you know, your truck came out and picked up my leaves with a loader truck, and I don't want that, I want to come out with a vacuum truck. We're going to get what we can get every time we're there. So if you guys can bear with us and express that to your citizens when they let you know what we're doing, we'd appreciate if you'd help us out with that. With that said, there will be something on Channel 99, we're doing a little PSA about leaves, leaf season, that kind of thing. That'll be coming out in the next few days, Brian Cox is working on that now. So bear with us, we'll get them up just as quick as we can, as best the machine and the manpower will allow, and then we'll work with you all we can. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Mr. President, could I say a word to them?
Yes, sir.
For those watching and listening on radio and watching on TV, I know sometime it gets frustrating, they haven't been by, they haven't been by. I think we're the only municipality who does all that on a weekly basis with no charge. Most of them come out and look at what you got and give you a price, 25, 50, 45, whatever dollars it is to come get your trash and debris. And I don't know of any of them, I think that go pick up leaves, they might. But anyway, we do all that, that's a service that we provide, and it doesn't cost anything, so just bear with us.
In 2008, there was a study done of our financial workings and our size as a municipality, and it was recommended to the mayor that, you know, basically, we were told, you're stupid for not collecting, because you're missing an opportunity to grow your revenue. And he made the decision, along with the council at that time, made the decision to not increase those fees. So I think people should really not miss that point. I mean, that's something that we've been pretty deliberate in. And I'll be honest with you, I'm one of those who feels that we may need to reconsider whether or not it's something that we should take a different position on. But again, that's a good point, Mayor, I appreciate that.
Can I say something? Well, now, I also have a survey out that if you put leaves in a bag, and they can pick it up and put it on the truck, so that will save us money and not have all these big machines. So there's both, two ways of looking at anything we have, and we could buy the bags from what the information that I have, and make it cheaper than running these big, huge trucks that break down every so often.
Thank you, Councilman Avery, I mean, buildings.
Well, that's not a bad comparison.
Alright. So we're still at department and committee reports, so I did want to take an opportunity, there was an all-dot meeting on Monday, on yesterday, and I wanted to give Heath, our city engineer, an opportunity to speak to that, if I'm going to put him on the spot.
No problem. We actually had a joint meeting with all entities in Etowah County with the Department of Transportation yesterday. There's been an ongoing assessment of transportation needs in our area, so we were happy to see them take the initiative for that. That was, I believe, requested straight from Director Cooper, so they used their own resources, did a large traffic study, and culminated to the meeting yesterday, which I believe most of you probably saw the newspaper report on the outcome of that. But thankfully, they did see and agree, once the data came in, the need for the 759 extension. So that was certainly one of the priorities there, not named how we can pay for that, but you got to start at square one. So the major short-term goals being the needs that we all know here, because we live and travel through them daily, being the 431 Bridge at Coussar River, that one certainly needs to be widened out, projecting even if you have the 759 extension in place. Now, they looked at them both apples-to-apples, and we were glad they did that. They looked at the needs that we have with everything today without 759, and they looked at the needs and what it would create and the cost of that with 759, and essentially, the 759 extension does pay for itself because it drags so much traffic off of the adjacent roadways, and, excuse me, the major highways currently maintained by the Department of Transportation. In line with the Megan Bridge widening, there was also the 77 Bridge widening, or a new bridge essentially, leading into Southside, between Rainbow City and Southside. The third was the corridor, Highway 411 corridor, actually, all the way from the Highway 77 intersection up to South Third Street. So that's a major project, except all of these are major projects. And then the initial goal would be to do a traffic study, or an additional, more in-depth study, which everybody cringes when we hear that, because we've been in a study mode there, but to refine the type of roadway that 759 extension would need to be or to be constructed as, to maximize its efficiency, to do as good as we can with alignment, which has been one of the major concerns environmentally, but also to make sure that we build the roadway facility type correctly. And Brian Davis, the author of this report, mentioned, of course, like an expressway where you don't have any stops, you basically just go from point A to B, and it gets everyone there as efficiently as possible. But would that help our sideways, our side streets and our corridors joining in that area, with the thought being, do we need to have some intersections at Broad Street, at Litchfield Avenue, et cetera? So that study would refine that, and be short-term, and he sympathized with the fact of another study as well, but said, if we could do this, it would certainly benefit the overall plan, and I don't disagree with that. With that being said, any questions the council has regarding that meeting? Again, the biggest question was, how do we fund that? And they did not have that answer, but realized that we, the folks with the state would need to get their heads together, and I'm sure cooperate with us in whatever form or fashion that could take place, but at least we've got a plan to move forward, and it seemed that we had a good consensus all across the entities in the county, so that was a very positive thing. Thank you.
That's good. He had input from the mayor and Boaz, and several other municipalities. There's about 300, 350,000 people doing a 20 to 30-minute drive here, and we're getting a lot more regional because of shopping and also medical. And he was quite surprised, the mayor Boaz told him that that even affected them when they come to shop and all the way it's set up now. There is money in Montgomery, you have to know how to get it. So I would suggest, if you want to, drop a little postcard in the mail to all our delegation, and send the governor some letters, and let him know what the need is up here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so now we're down to citizens' requests, Mr. Duramus?
Curly Duramus, 2202 22nd Street, East Gadsden, Alabama. Been a resident of this area for almost 60 years, that's a long time. My biggest thing now is Litchfield Middle School. I got six children, two already there, and this is what prompted me with the PTSO, to see my children come home with no homework, what I first principal. And they was allowing the children to do whatever they wanted, no other allowed the whole nine yards. And when this man made a statement to the children, how dumb they was, it was time for him to leave. PTSO, I know, helped them go. But at the same time, don't send this same man back to us. It's nothing in the school he should do, because those same children see the statement he made and watch him when he come in, and what you think they think. Okay? My thing now is, they went to the classic, they performed well, they just wasn't dressed properly enough. And we brought that back, we tried to get a tuber for them, they didn't have one, presentable enough to play. They went to the high school, or called to see if they could get one, they wouldn't let them have one. And I think if Litchfield being an incubator for the high school, they should be trained enough going into high school to know what to do, when to do, how to do it. And it shouldn't be a selfish step there. And I take that back to the Board of Education with Mr. Ed Miller, and I made several statements to him, don't come into a gym, to a program, and look over the folk like they're nothing. Speak to them, those are the children's parents, if you're going, in order for them to respect you and you to get what you need out of them. But every time something is asked from the board, if somebody says, well, go to the board, people been going to the board all these years, nothing done. But I thank the mayor and the council for doing what they're doing to help us when we mentioned about uniforms, and they said they were going to see what they could do on all of it. The council have helped the PTSO and the band with instruments and the whole nine yards. But when things first started happening with the heat going out a few years ago, it was said, who told the board? Well, I told them, let them know. Well, I told them, let them know. Duramus said it, I ain't got nothing to hide. You can't fire me, and you know how people are about their job, you don't expect them to open their mouth and get fired. You know, and we know how that operates. But my point here today is to let the board know they need to do better, not the board, but Mr. Ed Miller, he needs to do better than what he's doing. This is not my stopping point, because if don't nothing happen there, I'm going to put some fire on him, too. I got a way to do that, and you know there are ways, but I thank the council for doing what they're doing. No ain't it, no raising, I'm glad of that, you know, but Mr. Billis has said that he went into a couple of schools several times and to the Gaston City, and how well they were doing, but I want you all to walk through Litchfield Middle. Since Mr. Parker has taken over, it's quiet, the children are doing well. And my statement to the teachers and Mr. Parker, when you got one doing bad, correct them. You can't let one bad apple spoil the whole bunch. It's quiet in there, it's run like a school now. So we need to get behind Litchfield Middle and push them in every way. One more thing is that we've been had lights out over there for, since I've been there, hadn't replaced a one. They've replaced the starter, but no bulbs. It was said last week from Mr. Ed Miller that they don't have funds to do that. Now, if you can pay $47,000 for your children to go play ball, you can't replace a light? Something wrong with you, okay? So I thank the council, I'm putting it to the council and to the people in our area and under my voice, to push and let's get this thing done before the news media take it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duramus. Now we're down to remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor? Councilwoman Toles?
I don't have a remark, but I'd like to request, through the mayor, the Public Works, you know, we're abating a lot of houses, and then the demolition process comes in, and I believe that Councilman Cannon talked about it, about the abatement, but I don't think the public really understands about the demolition process. I think that they think that when we abate a house, then we go and tear it down the next day. So that's what I'm asking the mayor to allow Public Works to just come and explain the process of the demolition, that, you know, there's a process that we go through, there's a time period that we go through, that we just don't tear down houses the next day once they are abated.
Councilman Echols? Councilman Wether?
Well, I want to touch on what Mr. Duramus said about Litchfield Middle School. We all trying to help them and want to help them, but I think the board need to help them also, because we as a city give them a lot of money, and then not only, on top of that, each one of these council persons give out our discretionary funds to the schools. So I don't understand why they can't put lights in there. And I did talk to Dr. Miller about it, he came and gave us an update last week, because I was over there for the Veterans Day program, and I went in the band room and over half the lights are out, so how can they see? But I forgot about the hole in ceiling, I didn't tell him about that, but he did send someone over there right after the meeting. I got a call, and he did send someone, I don't know if they fixed them, but he did send someone. So thank you.
Councilman Billis?
Yes, I'd also like to mention something about that. If we can pay a football coach almost $100,000 to coach football, we could at least be able to put some light bulbs in, and I agree with that 100%, but it falls on deaf ears sometimes, so maybe the public has to do something about that. And also, I'm a member of PTO over there, so I go to that school also. There is a basketball game tonight at Gaston City High School. They play at, I think, 4:30 this afternoon. So attend and support your local schools as much as you possibly can, please.
Councilman Cannon?
Ms. Toles, I actually did two segments on Channel 60 about nuisance and abatements, and how we do all that, we might can get that, if the mayor can get it from Channel 60 to put it on Channel 99, and went through the whole nine yards, the first step of abatement, all the way through the end, and how your house gets on the end of the list and all that, so it's just two segments I did on that, and that'd probably be a pretty good bit on there. It tells everything, goes through everything about abatements. I did want to say that everybody up here don't want to abate houses, but once you've had a house, three years, you haven't did anything, the outside looks rough, we've had people in District 6 that's got killed in houses, houses been set on fire with no power and all this kind of stuff, it's just, you know, time, guys, we just have to make a move up here. When houses are in bad shape, we got to let them go and do something. If owners had three years and hadn't did anything, they're probably not going to do anything. We'll set up here and, you know, give people 30 days, or 90% of the time, when 30 days rolls back around, we have to bait the nuisance anyway, so I mean, I don't know what to do, I don't know if do anything more than we're doing, I don't know the answer. And I'd be glad to listen to an answer, if somebody could come up with an answer for us. But I think we've talked this nuisance and abatement stuff forever up here. I know in the last nine years, and we hadn't came up to a solution. We did the rehab, like the mayor said, we spent, I think it was up to $7,500, maybe a little more on some houses, and as far as I know, we still got. Don't we have one house, Brian, we hadn't sold yet? It was on a nuisance or two. That we hadn't even sold, you know, so they're just sitting, we've got our money tied up, and we hadn't sold those houses. And I've looked at some of them, and we've probably put more money in some of those houses than we should have put in them, because they can't, now they need a lot of work. But anyway, that's all I've got to say.
Councilman Reed? Thank you for that. Till next week?
So, just a quick comment regarding some of the positive things. I mean, we talked about Heath, Heath Williamson talked about earlier, the good feedback that we got on Interstate 759, and, you know, guys, there are, you know, there's not a whole lot we can say publicly right now, but there's just a lot of good things that are brewing within the city. And I'm excited about where we're headed with a number of things, so just stay tuned, watch intently and closely, there's a lot of good things in the works, and we appreciate the mayor and his, and every city employee for helping move this city forward in a lot of positive ways. So again, with all the negativity that gets put out on a regular basis, it's nice to be able to focus on some good things. Okay, is there anything else? entertain a motion that we adjourn?
Motion we adjourn.